Hi everyone, I will, uh, I guess we should get started here. It's just after um, two o'clock. I want to welcome Courtney and think, thank you for hosting this session for us. Excited to see what you're going to share since you're new from the last couple of years. So thank you for this. Um, and I also want to thank those of you that are joining us for attending and congratulating you on your admission to Vanderbilt. And, and I'll leave it to you Courtney.
Hi everyone, I'm Dr. Williams, Dr. Courtney Williams, and I am a licensed psychologist. And as Maya was saying, so I have done this presentation before, um, a few years ago, actually. Me and some colleagues of mine got together to record a session. So, it's nice to be here with all of you and to do this presentation again. And maybe there's some new things in here that we didn't have before, but definitely want to hear any questions that folks have at the end of the presentation. Feel free to mute yourself or, you know, put your questions in the chat. So I am a licensed psychologist. Again, my name is Dr. Courtney Williams. Um, I have been with Vanderbilt since 2019. I have been at the Counseling Center also since 2019. Um, my career at Vanderbilt actually started working with athletics and then transitioned into our outreach coordinator role. Um, and I've been, you know, outreach has been a big part of my job ever since. So I do want to share some slides with you all and just talk about some of the resources that we have here at Vanderbilt. Um, and so I will share my screen. Hopefully everyone can see that. Alright. Okay. Um. Alrighty. So can, can you all see this? I'm not able to see the chat. Okay, awesome, perfect. Alright, so, um, I'm gonna talk specifically about the Student Care Network resources. So being at the, working at the University Counseling Center, that is essentially one of the offices under the umbrella of the Student Care Network. And the Student Care Network is essentially the hub for wellness resources on the campus of Vanderbilt University. We like to consider what we do within the Student Care Network is offering holistic care. In a lot of ways, the Student Care Network has a bird's eye view for a lot of the wellness resources on campus and off campus as well. We do like to integrate, um, different parts of wellness into the student wellbeing resources that we offer within the Student Care Network. Um, and as you can see here, there are multiple aspects that we consider, not only in the services that we provide, but also really considering the intersecting identities of our students. Um, something also to discuss is our Identity Center. So I'll be talking about some of the offices that are under the umbrella of the Student Care Network, which include the University Counseling Center. But our Identity Centers are really important as well and also contribute to the wellbeing of the students on our campus. Um, those Identity Centers are the Black Cultural Center, also known as the BCC, the Casey Potter Center, which is our LGBTQIA+ Center, and our Women's Center. We also have the Center for Religious and Spiritual Life as well. And they offer various workshops, individual services, and we collaborate with them often. So within the Student Care Network, there are four essential offices that make up the Student Care Network, one of which is the University Counseling Center, and I'll get into the services that we offer in a second. Um, we also have the Student Care Coordination Office. If anyone is ever interested in starting wellness services in any capacity, typically the Student Care Network is going to be your first point of contact. The Student Care Network has a bird's eye view for a lot of the services and resources that Vanderbilt and the surrounding community offers. Students will be matched with a care coordinator who will do an initial meeting with the student to assess need and goals with the student and then provide um, a range of resources and recommendations based on the needs and goals that the student communicates. Sometimes those recommendations include the Counseling Center, and sometimes that includes working with the Center for Student Wellbeing. Sometimes that means working with the Student Health Center, or it could be a combination of those things. So the Center for Student Wellbeing offers a variety of services, including academic skill building, um, navigating life transitions, financial wellbeing, social support and relationships, um, academic coaching and wellness coaching is a big part of what the Center for Student Wellbeing does. Um, they offer mindfulness services as well, and they also have a student recovery group as well. Academic life coaching is something that the graduate school offers. Um, and we work really closely with the graduate school around different groups, workshops, um, and skills-based resources and services. Now, academic life coaching can provide academic progress and development. Um, this can look individualistic based on, again, the student and their needs and identities. Um, they're also really helpful with accessing resources, um, whether that be on campus or off, and just navigating different university systems and policies. Um, something that can come up in graduate school are interpersonal concerns and dynamics with PIs or mentors or even folks in research labs. And so academic life coaching has been really helpful in this regard, whether it's mediating conversations with PIs or offering support around various systemic, um, considerations that come up or different policies and procedures. Are you all seeing the slides? Transition from one slide to the next? Yes. Okay, awesome. For some reason it's... Okay, perfect. Alright. Um, I also want to talk about the, um, other resources. So, we talked about, um, individualistic resources, but I also want to talk a little bit about group programming as well. And again, this is not an all-inclusive list, but I wanted to still highlight some of the, um, group programming that's offered as a resource here at Vanderbilt. So the Graduate, um, Writing Group is a resource offered through the Writing Studio. It's a way for graduate students to support each other through their writing process. It typically meets weekly, either online or in person, and it's a way for folks to share goals, accountability, um, but not texts. And so it can be, um, that's also an issue, often an issue that comes up a lot in the work that I do personally with students about feeling stuck or feeling performance anxiety, um, when it comes to writing, whether it's related to a publication, dissertation, um, and feeling the, the pressure of that. This can be a good space to have that peer-to-peer support as well as help from the Writing Studio. Another, um, resource that has been an ongoing resource, um, is the Peak Performance Series. And that is a series that was first started with a combination of the UCC, Academic Life Coaching, and the CSW. And each session is focused on a different topic that typically comes up through the graduate school process. Um, perfectionism has been a popular topic, finding a balance between work and life and just navigating all the different roles that, uh, folks hold while going through graduate school, managing conflicts in relationships, again, whether that's personal or professional. Critical Conversations has also been a series historically offered through academic life coaching. And some of the topics offered have been imposter syndrome, receiving and responding to feedback, addressing conflict in academic relationships, uh, building self-efficacy. So I want to talk a little bit about the services offered at the University Counseling Center, again, where, where I work, and the services available are in multiple forms, so individual, but also, um, in group. Some of the services that we offer are individual therapy and group therapy. We offer urgent care as well. Um, that is a highly utilized service where folks, um, who are experiencing distress, suicidality, panic attacks, um, things like that can access this resource, um, this service without an appointment. It, it functions similarly to, um, an urgent care or a, um, an emergency room where you could come over, no appointment needed, and be matched with a clinician to help, um, resolve the situation in the moment. We also offer medication management. So our team at the UCC is interdisciplinary, where we have therapists of various disciplines. Um, and the same is true for our medical providers as well. And medication management is something that we can do in collaboration with therapy or independent of therapy. And our med providers are really good at working with students to help find a medication that is best suited for them, but also helping to work with, um, the, the financial strains that might come with it as well. Outreach is another big piece of the services that we offer at the University Counseling Center, whether that is requested from our campus partners, um, like today, giving this presentation, that is a form of outreach, um, where we're providing education and information around mental health and wellness-related services. Um, we also offer signature programs that typically occur um, on an annual basis. Um, for example, we have, um, a signature event coming up in March called Racial Stress Awareness Week, where each day of the week, we will do something related to promoting awareness about what racial stress is, providing skills and resources to help mitigate racial stress and, um, and things of that nature. We offer support groups and workshops as well, and those can be in the form of identity-based, uh, process-based, or skills-based. So some of our identity-based workshops have been, um, Black Girl Magic, which is actually a series that I, um, started a few years back. We have, um, also more skills-based groups, which is our DBT, um, group, which is a ten-week group, um, that is centered around either interpersonal development, um, skill-building around stress management or emotion, um, regulation. And each week, we learn a different skill and build on the week before. Anxiety Toolbox is another skills-based group or workshop that meets for three weeks in a row, one hour usually, um, via Zoom. And frankly, every one of us, I think, can benefit, right? Like, I think that we, um, anxiety shows up for us in different ways. And so this particular workshop educates about good anxiety, bad anxiety, how anxiety is functional, and how also to mitigate the experience of anxiety that are not. Um, then we have our graduate professional student, um, process groups, women's group, which is also an identity group, but also a process space as well, the support space as well. So in terms of things to consider, so just giving all of the resources either within the Student Care Network or within the Graduate School or the Writing Center, things that might feel more relevant to your experience. Typically, some of the things that bring folks to seek out these resources are especially navigating grad school life are multiple things, right? It's the adjustment to a new environment, new setting, whether it be Vanderbilt itself, or Nashville, or the United States. It is navigating multiple roles and responsibilities, whether that's personal, you know, personally related. Um, are you a partner and a parent, but also a student and, um, working within a research lab in various leadership roles that you're holding, while also the collegial, uh, roles and responsibilities that come with that. That can feel like a lot all at once, and all of those things intersect and can cause pressure and stress. Um, but also managing stress, burnout, um, can be an effect of holding all of that at once. Um, our graduate students have reported feeling isolated, um, financial concerns, you know, and, and the competitive nature that can come with, with graduate school as well. Intersecting identities can also impact how we navigate the world, how we show up, how we relate to others, and how others relate to us. Our social location, um, in the world can impact how stress manifests for us, how we manage stress. And as we look at these intersecting identities, that can be gender identity, sexual identity, race, religion, ability status, socioeconomic status. There may be some of these that feel really salient. Um, and there may be other pieces that don't feel as salient to us, but still can have an impact on our graduate school experience, on our mental health, on our wellness. And of course, the stigma related to seeking out support, and not even only the stigma, but feeling like there's not any time to make time for, uh, wellness in our lives. Kind of going back to that work-life balance, um, conundrum that comes up a lot in the work that we do at the UCC and Center for Student Wellbeing and, and beyond. Okay. Other, um, related concerns to mental health, I feel like ever since the pandemic, things have shifted in terms of how we socialize, in terms of having the capacity to do more remote work. I feel like Zoom fatigue is still real. Um, looking at a computer screen all the time is real. Um, there are still residual effects of, of COVID-19 and has various implications for, um, the way that we socialize and, and the way that we, we do work now. Um, ongoing social unrest and racial trauma and the different current events that are happening in the world, whether we are directly impacted by it, have friends, family, colleagues directly impacted, um, when there is social unrest in the world that will, um, have considerable effects on our own bandwidth, our own burnout levels, and then to still, um, have other roles and responsibility. Um, and as an effect of some of these things, anxiety and depression are typical presentations that we see, um, at the Counseling Center, and that can show up in different ways, whether it's social anxiety, whether it's anxiety and depression related to a specific, um, event, or if there are biological, uh, circumstances that have impacted them. Um, alcohol and substance abuse is another consideration, whether it's seen as a coping mechanism. Um, there are resources for that as well. And I would be remiss if I did not talk about suicidality. Um, again, the UCC and, and the Student Care Network is definitely a place for folks who are experiencing suicidality in any capacity to come and seek support and, and hopefully that experience, um, can be without stigma. Um, I, I still understand that stigma around mental health seeking behaviors is still prominent, um, as well as suicidality is prominent, and that is, um, that is something that we at the UCC or other community providers can definitely help with. Okay. So the last thing that I want to talk to you about are stress management tips. I want us to consider stress management in three different categories. So preventative coping, responsive coping, and reflective coping. Preventative is being proactive about your stress management, being thoughtful, having forethought around strategies. Do you have a plan? Do you have self-care strategies already in place to mitigate the stress that graduate school, that life can bring? Sometimes this can look like having a sense of community, building that sense of community, um, cultivating a regular self-care practice that includes gratitude, mindfulness, for example, um, body movement, actively prioritizing all aspects of, of wellness. Um, sometimes we can focus on one or the other, and, um, I, I encourage trying to focus on all of the pieces. That's physical, mental, relational, spiritual, tapping into all of your wellbeing needs. Responsive coping. So that is in response to a stressor, responding in those moments or to a particular trigger or activator. Honoring your emotions as they come, validating that, not invalidating yourself, reaching out and asking for support, knowing that you're not supposed to and don't have to do this alone. Practicing self-soothing skills. So typically, self-soothing skills are, um, activated by one of the five senses. So focusing on touch, smell, sight, those types of things to self-soothe. So it might be, um, the material on a blanket that's self-soothing. It might be lighting a candle and the scent that is self-soothing. It might be listening to your favorite artist, or, um, maybe it's a, a family video or something like that, and the sound, the voices, the tunes is what is soothing, um, in and of itself. And then there's reflective coping, honoring your resilience and the resilience of those that came before you, your ancestors, your community, and really, uh, grounding yourself in that and cultivating um, a narrative that's empowered, but also compassionate. That can be really helpful, um, in navigating your why. Sometimes that gets lost or forgotten in times of stress, in times of, um, uncertainty in terms, uh, in terms of doubt. And cultivating a narrative that feels empowered, that remembers your why, that honors your own resilience and the resilience of, of your ancestors can be really grounding and anchoring. Alright, so here are some links that would be helpful for your experience and some of the ones that I referred to in this presentation, the University Counseling Center, the Center for Student Wellbeing, the Graduate School, uh, the Student Care Network, um, and also the Career Center. Alrighty, so that is the end of my presentation. I'm gonna stop sharing my screen. And I want to see if anyone has any questions or anything that I can clarify.
That was really great, Dr. Williams. That was a nice presentation.
I appreciate the thumbs up.
Um, can you just talk a little bit more about how your services really supports the success of your, of students here at Vanderbilt during the course of their time here?
Sure. Um, with our services within the Student Care Network, I think what really supports student success is the variety, the diversity of the services that we offer. Um, Vanderbilt is a very well-resourced, um, institution, and I think that's one of the things that can draw students, staff, and faculty to the university. Um, with the diversity in needs and, and goals that students might have around their mental health and wellbeing, I feel like there is a, a service to support them, whether that be at the UCC, um, the Center for Student Wellbeing, the Student Health Center, um. We can connect students with resources. Um, one of the other cool features about the Student Care Network is if there isn't a resource on campus that can support a student, um, towards success, then we have services that can connect students to community resources. And, um, we're able to kind of bridge any gaps in that regard.
And do you find any challenges for international students in using services or learning how to use these services if they've never engaged in support services like this, particularly from it's not well-received or just not having experience in having access to this before?
Yes, for sure. Um, there, there are challenges. Um, and those challenges can be figuring out how to get access to services, understanding understanding what the services are. Um while Vanderbilt has many services, it can also feel confusing of even knowing where to start. Um which is why I, I do wanna emphasize that the Student Care Coordination Office is typically the first point of contact if folks are interested in initiating services. Um another point of challenge is having a provider that you feel like can get you and that can understand you. And I will say that that's something that is in constant conversation within the Student Care Network and also the University Counseling Center of feeling like we have um staff that represent accurately our student body as well. Um sometimes students want to see, oft- oftentimes, students um are interested in seeing a provider that matches certain identities that they hold.
Thank you.
What other questions do folks have or, or do you have?
Shy bunch.
Yeah, if you have a question and you don't um feel comfortable unmuting or turning your camera on, you can always put it in the chat, or you can message me privately.
Uh this session is also recorded, so if you wanna go back and watch it at a later time and reach out to your office, I'm sure Courtney you'd welcome any questions later. You can reach out to our office, graduate admission, if you need more information. Anything like that, of course, you're all welcome to contact us for more information. But with that, we don't wanna take up anybody uh any more time of anyone's. And I wanna thank you again, Dr. Williams. It was really a pleasure. Your presentation was wonderful. Thank you so much.
Some, I'm glad that we could connect this year. Thanks for having me.
Alright, take care. Thank you, everyone.
Alright, y'all have a good one.